I'd like to call the City Council to order July 13th at 7:00 PM. City Council chambers here at 232434 Vermont Street at the East Annex. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Mathoya.
Here.
Alderman Rita. Alderman Fairwell.
Here.
Alderman McGee.
Present.
Alderman Carr. Alderman Rol.
Here.
Five out of five here.
All right. I believe we have a motion to approve the City Council amendments from June 8th, 2021. And we have, it says Scrivener's error, what's the date?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, 2021. Did you want to do this at one time, or did you guys want to separate it?
I can give a couple of amendments, I can do it all at once.
Okay.
So I'd like to move the following amendments. And these are, to make it, make a little controversy out of it, I can give them away that everyone can read. In both the minutes of June 28th and I guess June 22nd, where, after public comment, where it notes in these cases, the presence of Alderman Johnson, I would like to amend the statements to read as follows. Alderman Johnson entered immediately following public comments.
Any opposition? Alderman Johnson, do you have any opposition? Okay.
And then if I could, the one other item, or we can do it separate, but I'll state it in a second. Under the minutes of June 22nd, under ordinance 2021, 20, zero, 21, regarding resolution of the city of Blue Island authorizing the funding for retention of public works employees, I'd like to amend the final statement, which is Alderman Fairwell stated he wanted objection to the language of the resolution letter for the record. I'd like to be a little more specific, Alderman Fairwell stated he wanted objection to the language, including the mayor as a holding member of the city council of the resolution letter for the record.
Just ask him for the comment, please.
Just a comment, that's all.
Any objections, David?
No, we'll go back and see what that exact comment was and put that later.
So as amended, is there any other amendments? So we need a motion as amended by Alderman Fairwell to approve the minutes from July, June 8th and June 22nd. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Rol, is there a second? Is there a second? Alderman Fairwell, any question? Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Mathoya.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Rol.
Aye.
Bye-byes, Your Honor.
Motion carries. Public comment. Anybody needing public comment, please come to the podium.
What I have here is lack of law defense. All the judges, all of the attorneys and magistrates, they all have the same thing. So that's all I'm gonna talk about today is law. For the record, I am everything L, a natural born, worship American national of North America, the United States of America and its republic, who is extralation to de facto Marvin O'Neill, who is a corporation, artificial person, and legal entity. Law case Dartmouth College versus Wilton. Marvin O'Neill is under color of law, I am not. Without substance of any legal rights. Law case State versus Breachler. And on February 17th, 2021, he was treated as such from policemen of the Blue Island Police Department, which is the premise of why I'm here. Marvin O'Neill is civilly dead in the eyes of the law, which is called civiliter mortuus. I, everything L, am here today in full life, in proper persona su juris, which is a natural person with natural unalienable rights, not as being black, colored, negro, African-American, or any other negatory term. Furthermore, Section 242 of Title 18 makes it a crime for a person acting under color of law to willingly deprive a person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution for the republic. So yes, a crime and crimes have been committed by Blue Island Police Department, and I want justice. This is the law enforcement oath of honor that every policeman or woman has to take. On my honor, I will never betray my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always maintain the highest ethical standards and uphold the values of my community and the agency I serve. On February 17th, 2021, I will show you how none of this was done. I'm a published author who was leaving the Blue Island library from taking pictures of my book that was just put on the shelf called Everything is God by Marvin O'Neill. As I was going to the Blue Island post office, I approached the four-way stop sign right over there at York and Greenwood to make a left turn, which I completely stopped at. Before I signaled and turned, I saw a police car coming at the stop sign about forty, thirty, forty yards away, south, going in the direction that I was traveling. They didn't stop at the stop sign, they blew the stop sign and pulled me over because he said, and I quote, "You cut me off." And there is video of this conversation. Patrolman Robitz, badge number 177, asked to see my ID. I kindly declined because Supreme Court case Colander versus Lawson in 1983 says, "I don't have to," by law. People don't know this, but I'm letting y'all know today. It's not a, it's not a crime, and it's, I don't have to show you my license, it's in the law. So, he called for backup. Five or six more policemen came to my truck. He ran my place and a lady radio back, Marvin O'Neill, 2024 Explorer, he's clear. So I thought that was gonna be the end of it. Next, he said, and I quote, "Get out." And I kindly declined. So at that point in time, they opened up my door, opened up both my doors tyrannically, pulled me out. So now I'm on the ground like this now. I'm on the ground with my hands like this so they can't put my hands behind my back. So I'm like this, people grabbing all on me, right? It don't look real nice to see that, but that's what happened. So as this happened, a voice in my head came to me and said, "Remember Philip Coleman? Philip Coleman is my childhood friend that I've been knowing since I was four years old. He got tased to death by the cops." So I'm in the snow, I'm in the slush, I'm in the cold. Somebody said, "F him, tase him, just tase him," right? Thank God they did, notice I wouldn't even be here more than likely. So at that point in time... Hold on. And so at that point in time, that's when I was unlawfully, I was kidnapped. I wasn't arrested. To be arrested means that you have to commit a crime and it's done lawfully. I was kidnapped, that's unlawful. Okay? So in the oath, the word integrity is being the same person in both private and public. So, we're in the public now. Do anybody here think that they gonna do that to me now? I don't think so. And it's three of y'all here, they're not gonna touch me. Why? Because they would be violating their integrity. They're not gonna do that in public because we here now. But in private, that's what you did. So then, it comes down to no integrity but indecorous and infelicitous behavior. Y'all can look them words up. The honor was dishonorable. Public trust was 100% betrayed. Character was full of malignity. No courage, just cowardice. Accountability, I have yet to see any. And I've talked to Rob Rita, I haven't talked to her, but I went to the office a couple of times. So he, what I'm saying today, he already knows, I haven't heard or seen anything from anybody with this matter. Or for them to be held responsible for the oath that they took. So when it says community, that is served, so when it says community, that is served. The community has jurisdiction over lawful control because I am the people, which is what it says in the Constitution, who has sovereign and supreme power, not the police. The police are, y'all are public service. I don't work for them. They work for the people, and I am the people. As I conclude, universal violations have been committed, the United Nations of the Rights of Indigenous People, the United States Nations Declaration of Human Rights, and the Constitution of the United States and its republic have been violated. I can't believe, Mr. Johnson, I'm talking to you on the phone? How disrespectful can you be?
I've got my messages on the line.
Everything said therein today is absolute law, facts, and irrefutable truth. So before I conclude, Jeffrey Far, the Chief of Police, the mayor, I didn't know that was you, Fred Bolado, Dexter Johnson, Louise Montoya, the Second Alderman, and all of the other Aldermen and all the women who are here, it's seven of them. I'm calling all y'all, I'm putting everybody on notice so that y'all know what has happened and what has transpired. I had to go to the hospital, my shoulder's still messed up, my finger's still messed up and swollen from what happened to me. So, I want justice. So as I conclude, Sergeant Schultz, when I came back the very next day to file my report, this is what he said, and y'all can view the tape too, when I came in there on February 18th, I came in there. You can review the tape. I asked him, I want, I let him know, I want to fill out a police report for what happened. He said, "I will not allow you to do so. You have a nice day, bye-bye," and walked off. Now what is that? So, I want justice. That's why I'm here, because I want justice. Everything said therein, all rights are reserved. Thank you very much. If anybody has any questions, comments, concerns, thoughts, or opinions, you can ask me right now.
I was gonna say, on the way out, unless you wanted to wait for the whole meeting, can you talk to one of the city administrators and get your information? Because I'm not aware of the case.
I have, he has it. He has it. And they were, when I came the very next day, I talked to, I had, she doesn't work anymore, but Marissa, thank you. She walked me down there, because I said, "I'm not going down to the police station to be kidnapped all over again." She walked me down there to actually help me to get the police report filled out. So, she's not here anymore, and I let, and I wrote down on some paper to let her know then, to let you know, and let everybody else know, who has, who has power over the police, what happened.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Far, uh, Chief Far, charged.
That I cannot say. This was 2021, this year, February, so that I can't ask if he was on the job or not, I don't know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hello, I'm Jackie Murphy of 13042 Western Avenue of Blue Island. I am one of the Three Sisters of Three Sisters Antique Mall, which is actually celebrating their 25th anniversary in business this weekend, starting Thursday through Monday. So I invite you all to come by any of those days. We have our typical anniversary sale, but of course, since it's our 25th year in business, we'll have extra entertainment and, as well as food during the weekend. The other reason why I also came in front of you guys, I know city clerk had spoken on my behalf a few weeks ago about Dog Days, which is an event that I organized and ran back in 2019, and I'm just coming to speak with you to know a face, to the name. I am organizing it again for this summer, for August 28th, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM, for any Blue Island businesses that want to participate, as well as other Blue Island organizations, they can reach out to me. I have flyers that I can leave in the back for anyone that's interested, or knows of any businesses in your ward that might be interested, they can get in contact with me. But if you're not familiar with Dog Days, we had it in 2019. Each business was in charge of what they wanted to do, whether it was live entertainment, food, drink specials. For us being retail, we had different sales, sidewalk sale. So kind of the same thing again this year we want to do, but also adding more and more businesses so all of Blue Island can participate. If you have any questions, just...
Jackie, we still haven't found the banner, correct?
No.
So maybe Louise could help us look at the mark? We have a missing Dog Days banner. I helped Jackie, like, two years ago, we bought it, and now it's just missing an action.
Yeah. That would be appreciated if we found it.
If we can't find it, we'll make another one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Andrea Dillon, I'm the only a baba jet catering. I've been in business for 16 years and in the neighboring ward over here, 119th Ward in Beverly Market Park area. I am interested in purchasing the old funeral home that's on the corner of Vermont and Maple. Turned into a beautiful place to have small intimate gatherings like weddings and baby showers, and it's, I'm from New Orleans, if anyone has trouble with my accent. So it's gonna have a very kind of old school look to it, and just keeping with the neighborhood as far as that historical look. I'm excited about the property, I'm excited about being part of Blue Island. Again, I'm from a neighborhood in New Orleans called Uptown, which is a very kind of quaint neighborhood that reminds you very much of Blue Island. And that's why I settled in the Beverly area, because it reminded me as much as it could of Louisiana, where I'm from. So I hope you guys are welcoming to the idea. I think it's gonna be a beautiful space. Also, a little about me, I am a, generally, I do, I'm a city vendor for the city of Chicago. So I do a lot of events for backstage catering. So I've fed people like Amitha Franklin and Kirk Franklin, just a slew of different stars and athletes, and that's pretty much my business. I don't do a whole bunch of consumer business, but I'm hoping with the event space, I will have a lot more consumer business and a beautiful place to have some intimate gatherings and bring some new revenue and just some new clientele and have a beautiful place for you to have political functions. I do a lot of campaign and political functions from the city with the different Aldermen. I've worked for all of the mayors and most of the governors. So I do a lot of their events, a lot of box lunches, and even during the pandemic, my Alderman Matt O'Shea paid me to feed a lot of first responders. And presently, I have a contract out of New York that I provide about 1,000 meals a day going to low to moderate income displaced and first responders. So I'm looking for a bigger space so we can keep that program. Hopefully, even after the pandemic, they will continue to help supply food to the people that are in need. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I received your letter from Alderman Matthew O'Shea, highly recommending you to open business in town here, and looking forward to working with our planning and zoning. And I'm sure you already reached out to Howard Capari, which is community development, and I'm sure we'll hear about it because it's been vacant for quite some time, but I think I'd be happy to have a tenant there.
Okay. Thank you. I look forward to being a part of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Myleene Monet, and my address is 2632 West 121st Place over by Kitty Corral Park. That area over there has changed quite a bit, where I've had to call the police numerous times, I've notified Alderman Candace Carr, which she hasn't been doing anything, and I guess she's not here today. I want to know if Alderman Monteau is here, please raise your hand. I want to say thank you for responding to me. He just sent me a message, because I sent emails to all of the council on one situation we're dealing with is the parking, saving parking spots. People have dibs, they're putting out garbage cans, cones, buckets, horses, whatever garbage they have to save their spot, especially over on 120th, 121st Place on Anne Street, and in the, by the Kitty Correl Park area, my block, 121st Place to 122nd. It looks dirty, messy, and when I'm walking around Blue Island, talking to people now, videotaping things to send to the news if possible, I get the comment that people are not calling this town Blue Island, they are calling it Ghetto Island. I've never heard that before, but I've heard it from more than one person. Things are not getting done, okay? I've complained to Alderman Candace Carr for over a year on these parking dibs that look terrible, she has done nothing. I have talked to her about loud music, people staying up all hours of the night, children screaming, laughing, dogs barking, all she sends to me is put up with it to 10:00 PM and then call the police. This is ridiculous. I have lived in Blue Island 35 years, it's getting worse and worse every year. I suffer through migraines, I've been to the doctor last week, she's telling me, "Myleene, you gotta calm down." She goes, "Your blood pressure's rising, I have a rash now because of stress." She's like, "What's going on with you?" I tell her about my block, I start crying, she's like, "Well, something needs to be done, complain about it." I've done it, I've done it, I've done it. I found a neighbor that lives close to Candace Carr, he tells me that there's loud music right next to her. I said, "So why isn't she an advocate to get a noise ordinance?" He's like, "We don't know, we can't sleep either." Where I live, there's a lady behind me going through cancer treatments, chemo's. She is heavily medicated, so half the time she is sleeping. What about the elderly, the sick, the young kids that need to go to bed? Nobody can sleep because a person next to them on their block behind them is having a party. I don't know, permits are given out to have bands? I literally have a six-piece band next to my yard, in the next block across from me. They play, and they play, and they play. There's no time limit on anything, there's no volume on anything. You call the police, I understand the police are trying to do their job, trying to go over there, calm it down, shut it off, I get it. But the police are busy with other serious matters. Where is our ordinance? Where are the consequences? I have to have a heart attack or stroke? I have to continually take migraine medicine? I have to buy air plugs, sleeping pills? Just because a damn family next to me wants a party? This is ridiculous. Please do something. I'm asking you, please do something. Do any of you agree with me? I'm getting head shakes. You are losing good people. They are moving out. I know three families, they told me, "I'm just, we're just waiting for my retirement to come through, and then we're out of here." I had a policeman tell me, "I'm just waiting for my time, and I'm out of here." It's sad that when I talk about Blue Island, people don't want to come in here, I don't invite friends over, they're like, "Oh, you live in a bad area." I've been here 35 years. I love my house. Please do something. The other thing that I have here is DJs, microphones, fireworks. I get fireworks in my area, Kitty Correl Park, all year round. Vehicles, vroom, 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 all day long, all night long, dogs barking, people laughing, screaming, children at 2:00 in the morning, jumping on a trampoline. You call the police, I watch, the police leave, they don't quiet down, they just laugh. A lot of things around me are in Spanish, so I'm trying to tape things. I hear loco, loco, señorita loco. I hear my neighbors tell me, "F you, f you," all of them, all five of them. An eighth grader driving a car, telling me to "F you, leave us alone, mind your own business." Parking in front of a fire hydrant, coming down the street the wrong way, shooting off fireworks whenever they feel like it. They don't care. And the news is going around that Blue Island doesn't care, so come on in, do what you want. I have talked to the garbage men. We have no regulations, no limits on how much garbage. There's no consequences. He tells me, I've had more than one garbage person tell me, when they're close to the border, they see people from Kellye Matt Park just dump it over in Blue Island, and they laugh. He tells me, "Myleene, people know that Blue Island can do what they want." So they dump things here because Kellye Matt Park has regulations. The areas around us all have regulations, but not Blue Island. I have been on the phone to call Robbins, Kellye Matt Park, Posey, Elsa, Melothean, Markham. All of them have no, I'm sorry, they do have an ordinance for noise, we do not. Our reputation is declining and is declining fast. I don't want this Blue Island to be represented as Ghetto Island. Garbage, furniture's left out, TVs are left out, it's disgusting.
Ms. Monet, I didn't respond to you today, but however, last email you sent me, we do have an ordinance on noise regulation during the day. Now it's just a matter of enforcement.
That's during the day? You mean all 24 hours?
It is.
Seven days a week?
It's a...
I like to see that ordinance.
Yes.
And I like to see something get done. And I can give you exactly what addresses you can go to. Okay, the other thing that I have is permits. I see a lot of work on fences, roofs, siding, yard sales, but no permits in the windows. Other towns, you must have it displayed in the window, otherwise there is a fine, an additional fine. Again, nothing is getting done. People are doing things on Friday night during the weekend to get the fences up, the roofs up, to hide from the building department. We are losing revenue. Please, I know we need to hire more people, I know there's people who've cut back their hours, I get that. I've talked to the building department numerous times. But because of all that getting pushed back, all this bad stuff is increasing. People are laughing at us. This is ridiculous. Again, I don't know, permits are given out for events, for parties, where there's allowing bands, DJs, whatever.
There is not, from the ones you sent me, they were never given permits.
We have not for the Kirk's office, we have not given, I've got three block parties coming up, I have not given any, issued any permits for bands.
Okay, then that, my neighbor was a liar. I went over there literally screaming, screaming. I have it on video, but I have a government phone because my low income, and it doesn't transfer over to you to see it. I've tried numerous times today. He told me, my neighbor at 2628, 121st Place, I go over there screaming, videotaping it, "Can you please turn the music down?" He's like, "I have a permit. The Alderman told me I can do this." He is a liar, he lies to me all the time, he just says "F you" to me all the time. His wife waves his hand to me, "You loco, you loco, leave us alone, mind your business." Well, it is my business, you're becoming, I'm becoming part of it. I would like to stay in my house, turn on my... I would like to stay in my house, turn on my TV, instead of turning up the volume to I would like to keep my windows open to get some fresh air like everybody else. I would like to talk on the phone to a friend. And I would like to get some sleep, or possibly just think, hear the birds. I can't do any of that. I am asking the council to please listen to your residents and do something. This is getting a bad town, a bad name. And it's sad that I have to spend time calling around our area to see what they have and what we need. You have good residents, you have a lot of bad residents, and the bad is increasing. People don't respect anybody anymore. Property, person, property, you know, whatever. I ask him, can you show respect to my property? I say, you need to be like other neighbors, clean up after your kids, you know, be a parent. The kids nowadays are the parents. They tell them what they're gonna do and they just do it and the parents allow it.
Ms. Monae, a lot of the issues you've mentioned, we either have ordinances on that needs enforcement and, and you're speaking to the choir on a lot of the building issues which we're hopefully addressing as we're addressing as we're filling those roles. So I, you're not screaming to the choir here, we know what you were talking about.
Okay, I understand.
Everybody sitting here knows what you're talking about.
Well, I need you to make sure, because I know you're a history teacher, I'm a retired teacher, so let's do an analogy here. If I was in my classroom, you wouldn't want somebody just coming in your classroom just interrupting you, turning on a radio, screaming, whatever. You would call the principal, you would call security, whatever. It's the same thing. My house is my house.
And we hear you. I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Please, if you speak up.
Under Old Business?
Hi.
How you doing?
My name is Gaila Calloway Smith. I live at 1918 High Street. Here today with some other neighbors on the block regarding the tenants that live in 1926.
1926 High Street.
High Street. We, since you said the address, I-
I've sentenced officers there multiple times since taking office. I know we have a full docket on a housing court violations at that address. Trust me, I know everything that you're probably gonna tell me.
Okay.
And it's gonna be at the housing court docket, at least the stuff, the building concerns. The police department's a different matter, however, we are very aware of that address.
You are aware of the address?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so now the question is, what is being done?
Housing court is July 28th, and the police department might be doing some different, different from other issues, but I know they have a full docket on that address.
Okay, so you're aware, you said the housing, the-
Housing court.
Okay, is that for eviction or what is that?
Everything. We don't evict people, we do fine for alley garbage, exterior property maintenance, everything outside of the house. We can't go inside the house. Billing department could do other things though, and they're aware of the address also.
Okay. All right, so something's being done.
Yes, I personally walked that, I've walked the entire city since taking office and I personally was there when those tickets were written, and I am following up on that address.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, my name's Robert Nelson, 1924 High Street. I've been a resident for 46 years, just to follow up real quick.
How's your dad?
He's doing good.
Thank you.
But those fines and that would go towards the landlord, not to them, correct?
Landlord always gets the pressure for the fines, yes. Police department, if there's other issues where they're breaking the law, that's different, but the landlord would get the brunt and then it's up to the landlord to do evictions. We're not home rule, we have certain authorities we don't have, but if you put enough pressure on the landlord, I'm a landlord myself.
Right.
We get the message.
And also, this, the past year, I know police have been there several times, walked through the yard, and it seemed like they didn't pay attention when they were growing marijuana in the yard. And I brought it up to the landlord, he said, I've been told by them, by the tenants, it's legal to grow. Say, I don't believe it's legal to grow within 1,000 feet of daycare or school. And you have the small fry daycare, which is 800 feet from that address.
I'm not sure of the issues, but I just made a note of that issue.
And I've seen, there's also cars that frequent around that area, and their children run out and exchange money and whatever, it seems like, and they're the same cars all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else have a comment? If not, we have Old Business, we have Resolution 2021-012, Resolution consenting to the mayoral appointment of the city attorney. Is this one where we have to make a motion to move it from table?
Yes.
So if we want to take action on this, we need a motion to remove it from table. If there's not a motion, I'll move on. Number one, under Old Business.
Might I suggest that we remove it from the agenda?
I was gonna say the same thing. So number two, we're all in favor of removing that from the agenda?
Yep.
That just won't be on the agenda. Number two, Resolution 2021-013, a resolution consenting to the mayoral appointment of the city administrator and the deputy city administrator. Is there a motion to remove it from table? If not, I'll move on. Under consent agenda, we have three ordinances. One is a Scrivener's error with the stop sign at 122nd and Maple. If some of the aldermen that were here preceding the election understand that this has been a backlog of an issue, one block difference where the stop sign was placed, that's number three. The other two are, I believe, handicap, handicap stuff. So if there's no other issue, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion by Alderman Farinwall, second by Alderman Rolle? Any question? Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Farinwall.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Rolle.
Aye.
Five ayes.
Motion carries under reported city officials. We have a motion to approve payroll for the amount of $393,955.60. It's a gross amount for June 25th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Alderman Montoya, is there a second? Alderman Farinwall on the question, on the question.
Just a little thing first, Mark was asking, thank you very much, I have a few questions about cables, payroll, and how they're gonna come about, so yeah. On the payroll, this would apply to both issues, which is, I've asked before and still I still don't have the clear answers, how are we funding the positions of the administrator and deputy administrator?
I believe that, I received a CC and an email that was sent out an hour or so before the meeting about that question.
I must not have seen it.
Did, Tom, did you want to answer that? You, email came from you.
Yeah. So apologize, Tom Morgan, city administrator, apologize, I normally try to respond a little sooner than an hour before a meeting, but it's been a busy day. So just to give you a synopsis of my response, so the short answer to your question on the funding of the positions is that they are funded out of general, the general admission fund under the 9900 code line item of contingency. Mark, I have a little more clarity on that, but that is, that is where the positions are funded from. The broader question, as you know, city administrator, deputy city administrator were created by ordinance, the salaries were assigned via ordinance. Obviously, that ordinance was passed well after the last appropriation document was done. So the positions under the current approach don't exist. As we talked about, I think in the committee of the whole, and so I know we certainly talked about when I was up here last, that issue permeates throughout a number of things in the city, in the city government. The, I believe it's 2021-05 ordinance number is the previous appropriation. That, just to cut to the chase of it, that document does not match the governance of the city right now. It's the recommendation of staff, and I believe the city attorneys agree with this, that the remedy to this would be an amendment to that appropriation document that not only addresses that, but addresses, I mean, I could be up here for an hour, we could-
Public Works.
A lot of stuff, yeah.
Police and Fire, the issues that you guys are aware of.
Yeah, Public Works, Police, Fire, et cetera. Now, new administration, new council, so I don't know that anyone necessarily, I mean, want to relitigate how that previous appropriation came about, but the fact of the matter is, the city government's, under this administration, with this council and that appropriation document, there's a number of areas that are less than ideal in terms of how it's structured, quite frankly.
Is the 9900 item, the contingency, is this the 958,000 dollars?
Correct.
I just have a basic problem with that. We, and the mayor, Alderman Carr, myself, Alderman Johnson, all voted along with all the other aldermen, that that particular item was for roads. Can you hear people unhappy about things? They're really unhappy about roads.
Understood.
And that is for that purpose. I cannot agree.
Okay, I guess the only question before the council, and it's not one that I think the staff can answer, but if the question before the council is, would relate to or need to hone in on, that this council did create two positions and did create them with salaries, and did create them several months after the last appropriation. So what the remedy to that is, I mean, I think I'd probably defer to the city attorney, but my understanding is the remedy to that would be an amended appropriation, because regardless of whether, regardless of where the money comes from, it doesn't exist in the current appropriation. So you've got an ordinance that says one thing, an appropriation that says another. So that, that does need remedy, I just don't know that you can get it from staff.
Okay, and then, kind of a little bit out there, but in order to amend an appropriation, does it not have to be the result of new revenue?
No.
It does not?
No, you can amend appropriation at any time. And the appropriation to another, another issue is under this appropriation, it says street resurfacing, and you guys appropriated $500,000 to that. The contingency, the 958, is just under general fund expenditure contingency. So if the intention of the council was to appropriate that contingency solely for roads, it also was not done correctly.
The ordinance itself wasn't stipulated, like in the previous year, we stipulated within transfers, we'd have to go back to city council approval. None of that was prepared by a previous city attorney, it's just generic, general administration.
To say nothing of a new administration after an election with, I just, I mean, I think you could have a broader argument here about, about the calendar itself, the fiscal year calendar, because you have a situation where a new administration gets elected and then, and only a short period of time after a previous appropriation. I think you've seen kind of how that plays out with a little bit of inconsistencies.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes, because it was two things that were just brought up, right? One is a half a mill, one is almost a whole million. I think Mr. Alderman Farinwall has suggested that the one that's almost a half a million, a whole million, was potentially earmarked, was so-called for road fund. Would the one that is earmarked for a half a million for road fund, would that be enough to pay the salaries that we're talking about?
I think either one would pay it, it's just, the road fund itself theoretically, it's covering the roads that we have projected to be done this summer, in the season. We still have to compensate 20% a lot of these projects.
So what is left from that, could we swing it from contingent?
But I think we're going down a dark tunnel here, we're taking it from a road fund instead of just general contingency.
No, what I'm saying is, even out of the 950, whatever's left, could it be earmarked for whatever shortcomings of the half a million was for road fund?
Well, just to step in, Alderman Johnson, I wouldn't be comfortable with that either because the 500,000 is for the roads and the 958,000, they also were for the roads, therefore, 1 million, roughly 1,400,000 plus is for the roads, like that's what I see.
I'm understanding what you're saying, Alderman Farinwall, but how is really law, how is it on paper, this road as a contingency?
It's contingency, and I think if we, we hardlined it contingency and making it more than what it is, we're crippling the city for another six months. We're fiscal year, January to December, we're not allowed to hire or fire or do anything until the new appropriations, I think that's, that's very short sighted. I think we need to be understanding that the appropriation wasn't done correctly and we need to be going back to possibly fiscal year, April through May, but unfortunately, we inherited a system that's January through December and we have to live within those means. Even replacing the positions we've always historically have were zeroed out in that appropriation and thrown into this contingency fund. Even positions like the, the former city manager of Mike Marzal and other people, they were zeroed out, like they never happened, like they never existed. So, and they were all thrown into contingency. So there's a lot of issues there.
To the mayor's point, this was a problem that existed even before the city administrator and deputy city administrator positions were created, because prior to that, I was serving in a director municipal services role, Mr. Kotoska was serving in a director of administration and finance role, and those were not properly appropriated either. So this problem existed on the books from day one, before that, quite frankly, because, as I said, I, because it's something that we've dove, dove very deep into, I can go on for some time about areas in city management where the appropriation simply doesn't match the reality of what's going on here. So I, it's, it's really less than ideal. I do understand, believe me, I drive here too, I just, I'm on my way to go pick up my car with a new rim on it, when I leave here, so I get it. But what we're really talking about is, is an appropriate ordinance that reflects the governance of the city, and in this case, of the staffing of the city. And so ideally, Alderman Johnson, you would have a scenario where, under general admin or whatever it would be, there would be a line item for city administrator, a line item for deputy city administrator, et cetera, et cetera. Because right now, we have a lot of scenarios, both in, from administrative standpoint, from frontline workers in terms of how lump sums work, work in this appropriation. There's lump sums that are very inconsistent, because they're lump sum, but they're not the same salaries. All of it to me, from my previous government experience, based on a very rational notion that there's a new government that did not necessarily adopt this appropriation, would call for, for the beginnings of a discussion on amended appropriation, which would obviously have to follow the same pathways as the original appropriation.
I just, I'm sorry, just now I'm in transition, but I am, because if you went and looked back at that tape where we passed that appropriation.
I remember.
It's like we all took a solemn vow to protect that money. I mean, it was a very serious discussion, it was voted on 14 to nothing, which we didn't vote on anything, 14 to nothing almost. And we all agreed at that time that that money was for roads and streets. And it's money that's falling on us out of the sky. So I, I'm sorry, I can't, I won't go for it, that's all.
I understand, I guess I would just offer up, just from a comment, just from an on-the-ground reality standpoint, I think we're probably open to how we want to fund city administrator and deputy city administrator, but if the answer is to not fund them, I don't know if that's the best, granted, maybe a little bias on that. But still, even if, even if Tom Morgan doesn't exist, you created positions by ordinance, they passed 6 to 1, the ordinances were, the positions were created with salary. You're, you're correct in describing a less than ideal scenario. I guess what I'm offering up is, I can't speak to the, I'm not a council member, I can't speak to, I wasn't a previous council member, I can't speak to the promises that were made to each other, what have you, I think, I can't speak for this administration and the mayor, in that we are trying to manage with a very imperfect document. And so I agree, it's, it's less than ideal and imperfect, but if the opt, I, I guess I'm listening for an option B, in terms of how we fund those positions.
I don't, I mean, I'm not managing the budget here, I was kind of hoping that the city could come back and say, here's option B, we're not getting it.
It's, it's, option B is going to involve moving money from different funds or passing an amended appropriation that properly reflects, I don't, legally, I don't see any other way you can do this.
Legally, excess appropriations can be transferred between line items without city council approval. General administration includes these positions. A contingency under a general fund, it can be done without city council approval, but what I think they're trying to do here, and what we've been talking about since the beginning, is get an amended appropriation that reflects what's actually going on here. And whatever may have been promised, when this appropriation was passed, it was not legally done correctly. So your appropriation does not read as you may have thought it was going to read during that council meeting, it just doesn't.
And could I add, we're gonna, we're gonna, we can, can answer on this a lot, but at the end of the day, we had a conversation with the last committee of the whole that's going to come up again very soon here in regards to a deputy police chief, so that there's more than one, a non-union administrator at the police department, right smack dab at the same problem. That, that position does not exist. It exists in, in the city code, but it does not exist in this appropriation. So if we're going to say, yes, Chief Far, we'd like you to be able to take a vacation with your wife for the first time in a year because we need a deputy here, that's gonna involve kind of the same thing that we're talking about here, creating the position, putting a salary on it, restructuring it, and then we're gonna be right back to where we are, which is the appropriation, we have a deputy police chief, which is good, but if no appropriation as listed in 21-005 ordinance.
All right, well, I will vote to approve the payroll. But we're not done with this.
All right, so- I agree, we need further discussion.
Is there any other questions on number one?
I just don't like that we're, you know, taken for Peter to pay Paul.
Peter, Peter doesn't exist, it's just a contingency fund.
It's the streets.
We're not, we're not taking it from a fire truck or someone that's working.
Better yet, Tom, to pay Tom. But yeah, the, you know, our, our roads, our roadways are vastly underserved, we, we don't have a solid plan for our roads. Every nickel that we have should go towards them.
No, I think no one's gonna disagree with you, Alderman, that every nickel needs to go through our roads, at the same time, I don't want to give up police, fire, public works, and general administration. around the city just to pave an alley. However, the alley needs to be paved, the street needs to be paved. We need to find additional revenue where we can, which will bring me to later under mayor's business and other items. Right now, we're under item number one, is there a motion? We have on the question, so is there, Alderman Johnson?
I got a motion and a question.
All right. Yes. Well, we already did the motion in seconds, so it's still a question.
Okay.
All right.
Because it's going to be a struggle to move forward, so I'm asking if we could have a special meeting, you know, with us, to try to hammer some of this thing out to where we can go. Because other words, I was just having a conversation with Alderman Fernwald, it's going to be murky, and we have not got a corner fixed, let alone a position done. So I think that needs to happen.
I agree. I do agree with remanding the appropriation. We could have a meeting just on the appropriation. And that'll lead right into one of Alderman's things that's on the agenda for tomorrow night.
Okay, cool.
All right. We can start, continue this conversation for tomorrow night, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
So, any other on the question for this?
Clarification, is the meeting tomorrow night or next?
Tomorrow night, second Wednesday in the month. Yeah, the way the calendar fell this month, it's kind of funny, but it's on the agenda for tomorrow night. Roll call, please.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Fernwald.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Nay.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Bye-byes.
Motion carries. Number two, a motion for approval of payroll for $328,201.26, the gross amount for July 9th, 2021. Is there a motion? Motion Alderman Roll is her second. Alderman Montoya on the question. Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Fernwald.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Bye-byes.
Motion carries. Number two, that's a typo here, so I guess it's number three, a motion to approve accounts payable for $424,055.2. Is there a motion? Motion Alderman Fernwald, Alderman Roll is second on the question. Alderman Fernwald.
Then again, thank you for the answers. Please, I just have a couple of questions. All right, so the first question of the SCA is, on page nine of the tables for Montana and Welch, the first item on their invoicing is an item of $16,956.25, general legal fees, and it was not, there was no breakout, so I asked Mark and he provided me with a breakout. So I do have a question about it. About $4,200 in those fees were related to FOIA, which I know sometimes are handled by legal, but more often are handled by the city clerk. So I just wanted some clarification on kind of general speed.
Just in pass, there's a backlog of FOIA, and we're going to hit, we have a lot of it, there's a backlog of FOIA that was not responded to for most of the month of April, let alone May and June. And we were living off extensions that were granted by the previous attorney. I disagree a little bit, because I know the very least city clerk always consulted with the attorney before receiving any information for the city. But we do have a backlog we're dealing with here, and it's still, we're still dealing with. And also, we're getting FOIAs almost every single day, which is highly irregular and more than normal.
I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
Thank you. The second item is...
And just also, just for the council, majority of the FOIAs are police department and fire department-related, because it has to do with insurance claims. I noticed, I didn't know that part existed, but a lot of them are dealing with whatever they're doing outside us, they want information from us, even building permits, for example, our FOIA to get the information. So if they want to pull a permit they applied for last year, they have to fill out a FOIA.
All right. On page 15, the law firm of Storino or Belton Durkin is, I think it's the first time on here, and their invoice of 45, roughly $4,500 was just services rendered, so I haven't given detail which Mark provided. And I wanted a couple of questions here about how this firm was selected and why they're doing what they're doing, because I just can't see that, thank you.
Yeah, I know majority, it's HR-related issues. We didn't have an HR person, they left the first day we took office, but if Mr. Ogun wants to answer, please.
Yeah, the short answer is, on our second, so the second day of our arrival as an administration, DW, the former HR director, quit and said, quite literally, "Don't call me." That left us with some challenges, quite frankly. Storino has had a law firm, Storino's a law firm primarily corporate law, they have some employment law expertise. We had some burning fire issues in terms of, we had employees who had just left, who had not been given their proper corporate documentation, which is illegal. We had a number of issues that we needed specific employment law. And Montana Welsh did advise us that they could put one of their attorneys, who wasn't necessarily a specialist on it, but it would take that person longer than it would take another firm. So it was a little bit of a barn fire hire, quite frankly. I don't know what their involvement will be moving forward. Once we have a more permanent HR person, I think it would probably be minimal, but this was literally legal compliance on hiring and firing. That's what we were after in terms of that, so we needed a specialist.
As you can see from some of the building, there's employees on there that resigned prior to us taking office, that were getting ready to sue the city because we were not responding as a city before taking office as this new administration with HR-related issues.
An item in their invoice, which I can paraphrase, that caught my attention, was checking to make sure things are okay. Seemed a little bit of an odd description from a legal bill. They might want to think about that.
I agree with you.
I also have issues with it being that it's Village of Blue Island, not City. I refuse to answer any phone call or message that calls us Village manager, Village president, Mayor Bellato.
I agree.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Johnson.
I'm not sure if we are a city.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Fernwald.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
What is this for, again?
Accounts payable.
Accounts payable.
Aye.
Alderman Roll. Bye-byes.
Motion carries. Number four, we have 100th Birthday Proclamation for Arthuria Alfred. Is she in attendance or family?
No, her son was supposed to be here.
No, they're not.
I brought, I had a cake thing.
One of that funeral, the lady is a hun, she couldn't make it. Her son is at, actually, one of our friends' mom passed.
So maybe tomorrow, I'll have to, Slattery and I are going to go out to some business, and we could jump it up, somebody be at her house. I know she's, so Alderman will say all right.
All right, well, I'll read it. We'll do it for her. So we got a proclamation, Arthuria Alfred, 100 years old, whereas City of Blue Island resident, Arthuria Alfred, was born August 22nd, 1921, and will be turning 100 years old this August 22nd, 2021. And whereas Arthuria Alfred has been a resident of the City of Blue Island since 1965. And whereas Arthuria Alfred is the mother of nine children, who are all raised in the City of Blue Island, and grandmother to numerous grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And whereas, the mayor and alderman of the City of Blue Island wish to celebrate the life of Arthuria Alfred, and wish her the happiest of birthdays for 100th birthday celebration, August 22nd, 2021. And be it resolved that the mayor and alderman of the City of Blue Island, on behalf of themselves and the entire community, extend their sincere congratulations to Arthuria Alfred for 100th birthday, and wish her many more years of health and happiness. Now therefore, I, Fred Bellato, Mayor of the City of Blue Island, and Blue Island City Alderman, do hereby proclaim happy 100th birthday to Arthuria Alfred, hopefully approved today, July 13th, 2021. So is there a motion to approve this? Made by Alderman Fernwald, seconded by Alderman Johnson on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Check, take that to her with the big time. Get a frame.
All right, moving forward, we have ordinance 2021, no ordinance to the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, amending Title III, Chapter 32, Title IV, Chapter 97, Title 15, Chapter 163 of the Code of Ordinances of Blue Island, Illinois, eliminating the Plan Commission, replacing with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'd like to move to table.
Is there a, is there a motion to table? Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Roll. Any question?
I had a question. Have you formed a new charter for this proposal?
I believe it's incorporated in the ordinance, correct?
Right.
The new charter was specified in the ordinance?
I'm not sure I know what you're asking about in terms of charter.
So both the individual commissions each have a charter that's specific to their cause, so this combining the two would require a new charter to comply?
Within the Code of Ordinances?
At least as part of the process.
Okay. Within the Code of Ordinances, what we're attempting to do is just eliminate the Plan Commission and combine the duties of the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals together as one commission with seven members.
Sure. And just for the record, I think we should solicit feedback from members of each commission and at least make sure that the charter is formed and then discuss it. I support the idea.
I was under the impression that was already taken care of. This was in motion prior to us taking over. Howard Capari was working on this for, I don't know, six months to a year. So I didn't, if that didn't happen, that can happen, but I don't want to, there's some things on the docket, he was hesitant, because 60 days just to go through both commissions is a lot of red tape for anybody trying to go through them.
Yeah, in fact, I'd just say, I also basically am supportive of cancer, but I do think that within the city council, maybe, I don't know, maybe, it probably can't be added to tomorrow night's agenda at this point, it's too late.
Still be discussion, committee's going to be discussed.
Well, we could discuss it, because I just think it needs, I agree with Alderman Roll, but we just, I want to have more discussion on it, so we all understand.
Can the commissioners come, or no?
To what?
Can the commissioners attend?
The committee tomorrow? Anybody can, it's a public meeting. We have a lengthy agenda as it is, we can discuss it.
Okay. And I have a question, what about judiciary? Do we eliminate that, or do we combine it with something else?
Judiciary committee? No, I think when you guys decided what liaisons you wanted, that was not part of...
Majority of the judiciary was handicapping and city ordinances that are going to come through committee of the hall anyway.
And I would add that, you know, we certainly reserve the possibility, potential for down to what we do here, we need to add any positions we can, but I agree that, I think we probably can get along about that, but if we can't, we can.
There was one of those committees that only met when needed, and a lot of it went through committee of the hall. The city council had had the positions. All right, so we have a motion made and seconded for tabling. Any other questions? Clerk, do the roll. This is a table, just to clarify, this is a table.
Alderman Johnson.
To table again.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Fernwald.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Bye-byes.
All right, motion carries. Under mayor's announcements, I'd like to start off with a formal announcement. As most of you have heard, one of the goals of this administration is to break free from the mentality of it's always been that way. I've heard that over and over again as an alderman and as mayor even, from some of our employees and contractors. And I think more broadly about how we can affect real change in our city. With that in mind, I have informed Robinson Engineering that it's my desire to go in a new direction as related to city engineering firm. I want to make a point to thank Tom Nagel with Robinson for his many years of work on behalf of Blue Island, and I want to say for the record that Mr. Nagel now and will remain a friend of Blue Island. I met with Mr. Nagel myself personally and discussed this with him. I also want to make, take a moment to introduce you to Dr. Christopher Burke with Burke Engineering. Burke is a firm that has enjoyed a solid reputation, not only as engineers, but also as grant writers, who can assist us in finding more outside revenue. And I'd like to introduce Dr. Burke to the city council. Yeah, come on up. Robinson will also be finishing any projects they started off with, and me and Mr. Nagel had a long conversation on that, so you won't be seeing not his face anytime soon either.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'll be short, I know you have other pending business. As the mayor said, I grew up in the South Suburbs, went to Purdue for a long time, got my PhD, and about 35 years ago, started my own firm. We have about 200 people in the Illinois offices, another 50 or so in Indiana. We do work throughout the region with the city or village engineer for about 30 communities and represents dozens more doing different types of work throughout the region. We work for all the various agencies that are involved with infrastructure design and permitting. As the mayor indicated, we do have people that help facilitate and work with the agencies to develop grant applications. We have, I'm here today with our community affairs director, John Doria, who also helps coordinate with the various agencies. Personally, as I said, I've been in the area, actively involved with professional societies. I've been on the faculty at University of Illinois Chicago for the last 20 years, where I teach courses in water. I finished up a term last year as the chair of the Morton Arboretum, and also am on the chair of the Conservation Foundation. What does that mean? At least I'm aware of the current state-of-the-art type activities and engineering practices that are employed throughout the region. And we bring a valuable amount of resources with the 250 total staff that we have in the state of Illinois and Indiana.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions for Dr. Burke?
Do you have a business card?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Dr. Burke, if you could expand also on when we first met about your history and expertise in flood mitigation and work you've done in the past, just a brief synopsis on that.
Sure, that's, when I started the firm, when I was in graduate school, I wrote the drainage manual for the state of Indiana, so I started doing a lot of drainage-related work when I started my firm. We've grown, we've done work for the Water Reclamation District, we're finishing up, we designed the large Bellwood flood control facility. We are finishing up, I think last year we had, during the pandemic, as many as nine or 10 different stormwater and flood control-related projects under construction in the Chicagoland area, throughout the area. So we work with the communities, and as the mayor indicated, the district is one of those entities that not only permits projects, but also in some cases can fund stormwater and flood control projects.
Thank you.
We need to give it a swing. We're well-known.
Exactly. He's well aware of it, Alderman Fernwald.
May I ask you a question? I made this for the city attorney, but there's two questions, actually. One is, you have the authority to make this appointment?
Not even appointment, I just, it's not, no ratification needed.
All right. So to say, I agree with you that we haven't reviewed the situation with our engineering firm for as long as I've been on city council, and it's certainly prudent to do that, so I agree with that. I have to say, I am extraordinarily concerned that this decision was made without, so far as I know, a process to vet various candidates, and like the best one.
I had several meetings with other municipalities in South Suburban and Southwest. Burke was highly recommended throughout the agencies, so, and after a meeting with them, I was happy with what I heard.
I'm going to have to pick myself off the floor on this one. This is not what I think we ought to be doing. I have no problem with selecting, looking for a new agency, it's fine. And it may be, you know, maybe we would have selected Robinson Engineering, but this is not my idea of how we should set our course for the next four years and beyond. This needs more attention. Mr. Mayor, I would ask you to please reconsider, and let's look at some options. And I'm, nothing against this gentleman, I know nothing about him, so I, you know, I'm not, you know, it's not an objection to you personally or your firm. It's just that this is a major change for the city, it's a really important one.
I believe it's been over 50 years, it's been the same firm, and I needed a change.[1675.32]
And I would ask you to please reconsider, that's all.
I made a decision, same thing with my city attorney, and I'm, hopefully I made the right decision, we will see.
Fine. Okay, let's spin the roulette, we all see what happens.
It would be nice to have an open bidding process.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Any other questions? I also say, like I mentioned earlier, it's a transition. Robinson still has some street repaving projects, every project they're working on, they're going to be completing. I've had conversations with Mr. Nagel since the meeting, notifying him of the change, and he's in attendance today. I'm sure we have to have discussion afterwards about any projects going on. I have to notify the aldermen of the work that's being done over the winter, this summer, hopefully we can get it done this summer. Anyways, moving forward. Under the hospital, my team met with, again, the V S USA, with Dan McNulty and his representatives, current ownership group of the hospital. They're proposing transitioning the hospital to a multi-use facility, would include an urgent care facility for the old ER center. They would like to do housing, except they go back and forth on that. There's space for education and job training for veterans and possibilities in veterans' housing as well. There are a number of moving parts to this proposal, many concerns that I reiterated back from when I was Community Development Chair, along with my alderman that sat on that committee. Everything still needs to be vetted by the committee of the whole, and Planning and Zoning, or whatever we're going to call it at that point. So it's a long process, just want to know the council, know that we've been meeting with them, tell them they need to put stuff down on paper. They've been met with Howard Kapari a few times, but it needs to come into focus before it can present it to any committee. So, and then code enforcement. As many people mentioned, we've been doing a lot of code enforcement lately. We're continuing our efforts to bring stricter code enforcement back to Blue Island. I noticed just on Walnut Street today, I noticed a house being painted, that was one of the houses being ticketed. I noticed multiple houses and in multiple areas that now are being addressed, from being the first round of code violations headed to July 28. Now, there's one whole pass to the city, obviously if someone rectifies their situation, there's not going to be any fine assessed, but more importantly is that it hasn't been done in many years, and then just like the city sticker discussion from the last meeting, we need to start somewhere, and it needs to be equal across the board. So that's been going on, if you've been seeing, the police department's been authorized to do that, along with the building department, hopefully we'll have a building commissioner very soon, and hand in hand, we'll be working together to enforce our codes in the city. So that's it for my mayor's announcements. Under treasurer's report, we have a treasurer's report we need approval for, is there a motion? Motion by Alderman, Roll, is there a second? Alderman Montoya on the question. Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
No.
Alderman Montoya.
Hi.
Alderman Fairwell.
I'm sorry, I'm still recovering. Can I ask the council, what are we voting on?
Treasurer's report.
Okay. Uh, yes.
Alderman McGee.
No.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Three ayes and two noes.
Motion fails.
I just, I just passed, but can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
I note that the checking balance at the end of this period was three hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents, and we just approved payables of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Do we have enough money to pay these bills?
I believe this includes the amounts we just approved, however, if anybody have an answer for that?
I don't have a copy of the treasurer's report in front of me. Our Mark Potts, the deputy vice administrator. Yes, we do. We have those funds, and then we also have some Illinois funds as well, and we make transfers throughout the year.
Yeah, I just, the reason I'm asking this, that's to do this, I sometimes...
We would have heard, we would have heard, we would have heard it.
We've held checks, you know, and I just want to make sure we're not...
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry also that I passed up city clerk's report.
I know, right? Need help, guys. Mark, want to help you? More of Tom. So the National Night Out Officer, or Chief Farr, was asking each alderman to try to pass these out to their ward. If they can. We've been working, we've been meeting, there's a lot of things going on for National Night Out. If somebody still would like to donate or contribute, you can see Laurie Salgado, she's willing to take any donations, right Laurie? There were trying to fill the book bans right now. Fireworks, or, oh wait, who is this? This is next. New restaurant in town. It is a seafood Mexican restaurant. They're inviting, they're gonna have opening day soon. They're inviting everybody to come for a drink, come tonight at the City Council. It will be on a random, we'll show you.
You guys need to, should get some?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Next is TGIF is back after a long, long time.
Alderman Johnson.
So I hope you guys come out, it starts this Friday. I hope it's about, it's very tough trying to get businesses, because everyone seems to be short help. But we're supporting over the next year, having some money in our line item, corporations hoping they get some money. TGIF that starts this Friday. And that is, also, there's two movies being filmed in town, and I did not, they did not contact me, they contacted Chief Farr, July 28, we had the police station filming, and July 23, we'll be at the hospital. They did not contact the clerk's office, they contacted Chief Farr. Good news, is we are up on vehicle stickers, 2021. We keep records of 2020 and 2017, as of right now. And Chief Farr goes out there and starts stamping everybody, we're gonna be way above.
Chief's very popular tonight.
Firework at the Falls is still, is on the 31st, we have everything scheduled to go. Last but not least, I emailed all the public works, the fire, the police, the aldermen, we have a few block parties. The rec center has one on July 25, somebody's renting out the rec center, they filled out an application with me. July 24, 2540 Walnut Street, July 8, 119th and 25, 119-25 Maple, and July 31, the old bar. So I sent emails out to everybody to let them know that we're always having their work. And that's it.
All right, thank you, clerk. Under city attorney?
All right, we have Resolution 2021-26, authorizing and approving a municipal lease for golf carts at the Meadows. This was discussed and approved in a previous committee of the whole meeting, but wasn't placed on the last agenda for whatever reason. So it's an agreement for the lease of twenty-five golf carts at the Meadows.
Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Fairanwell, second by Alderman Johnson on the question. Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Bye-byes.
Thank you. Just a side note, I, first time as mayor going to the golf course, I am not a golfer by any means, but I wanted to make a point to stop there as mayor, and it's like walking into 1996. I know it's not a high priority, but there might be a little cosmetics, the next appropriation we can fund the golf course, since it does make money the last couple of years, to at least do some minor upgrades. It's just, I'm not a golfer. The place was packed when I stopped in there on a rainy day, so. All right, number two.
Number two is ordinance 2021-25, which amends Chapter 123 of the Code of Blue Island. And basically, it delineates a procedure and a fee for filming activities within the city. There was nothing previously in the code, and as Rayanne just announced, there are a lot of filming going on within the city.
I'd like to move to table.
Motion to table, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman McGee.
This is a fine idea, I just, this is the first time I've seen it, I think, and I just would like it to come to...
There's a lot, I mean, like I said, the last two, there's two being filmed now that they didn't come through the clerk's office. Last week or two weeks ago, when I let you guys all know, they did contact the clerk's office, so.
Do the city get paid for this?
This is what, this was established, right now we have nothing in writing.
And I, I mean, it's a good idea, I just, we're reading that before I have changed it.
And for the record, we pretty much copied the City of Chicago's. Is that accurate, or pretty close to it?
It's a hodgepodge between the City of Chicago and Chicago Park District.
Chicago Park District. So we did borrow off language, but further discussion, fair enough.
All right, so there's a motion made and seconded to table on the question, good question. Clerk, do the roll to table.
Alderman Johnson. Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Bye-byes.
Motion to table. Number three.
It's an ordinance regarding the sale of personal surplus property, and it relates to the sale of more than forty vehicles that are owned by the city that are no longer of use to the city departments.
Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman, Roll on the question.
Just one question, and maybe I can see it, but I, but I, the only thing I don't see here that I'd like to see is how, what the process is to assure that we get the highest possible price for the office to like that.
The process is in the ordinance, I believe everything goes through city clerk by statute. I know we gotta get nothing, it's negligible there, it's more just cleaning house, I don't know if you've seen them all.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We did, there's stipulations in there, it's highest possible bidder, unless there's a local taxing body that puts a bid in, because the same taxpayer is like the school district line or something. But that's common boilerplate, you know? But it's individual bid, bin number, so you can't bid on all, unless you want to, you could do individual bids, but everything goes to the city clerk, and she has to open it a public date and time that's set, I'm not sure if you guys set that or not yet. You guys should set it, because I'd like to get rid of the junk here.
Is it, is it going online?
It should go online and also...
I always, I just contacted the newspaper recently for a bid, so I'm sure that goes to the newspaper.
I'm not aware of anybody, it's been sitting there for years, but by all means, we should publicize that they're out the bid. All right, so we have the question, please do the roll call, clerk.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Bye-byes.
Motion carries.
Number four is a resolution 2021-27 to allow the city to accept a grant from IHDA for developing a program to deal with abandoned property within the city.
All right, motion by Alderman Johnson, is there a second? Alderman McGee on the question. Clerk, please do the roll.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Montoya.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Bye-byes.
Motion carries. Alderman, account announcements, reports or comments? Alderman Fairanwell, please.
Couple of things. One is, I would like to thank sincerely the postal, mostly for a tour of public works, and I got to see all the junk equipment firsthand, and all the things that need to be done. Jim faces a lot of challenges, as we're all aware. I told Jim I want to support in any way I can, whatever improvements we can afford, and we'll be talking about this at committee of the whole, of course. And I thank Jim very much for his candid comments to me about what can and cannot be done, and I understand that, and we'll be certainly talking about it as we move forward. So thank you very much, Jim, I appreciate it. And secondly, I would like to just request, if we could, for clarification for all of us, this question that plagues me about the number of votes that we have, could the city attorney provide a written opinion about under what circumstances you support buy votes or votes? So that we all have that comfortable, clear vision of what you are...
I'll consider it. The reason I am cautious is because you've threatened to sue the city about this issue, and so if you're planning on suing the city, which I think could be a breach of fiduciary